Good evening. This is the Village of Atlantic Planning Board meeting for May 25th, 2022. Before we get into the two items on the agenda or three items counting the minutes, we're going to take attendance. All five members of the planning board are here. Richard Littman, Cindy Goldstein, Seamus O'Rourke, Ellen Styler and myself. Also with us are Frank Tavolacci and Dennis Drogan from the Building Department. Ashley Li and Alicia Moore from AKRF. Charlie Gottlieb, who's in for Teresa Backner today and Susan Oakley, our landscape. We are waiting for John Keller, our consulting engineer to come forward. Meanwhile, and we're missing Whitney, who's absent today. I think that's everybody. Okay. Okay. So before, as we have the minutes of our last meeting, which was May 12th, 2022. Does anybody besides me have any comments?
I have, I have just one comment. I would like to suggest that we add a comment, brief comment to the 652 Shore Acres Drive. Something along the lines of in response to the question, whether supply chain and labor issues was the only reason for delays in commencing construction. The applicant confirmed that that was the case.
That's reasonable. Well, there was a big typo here and I can't believe that Cindy goes to be disappointed. Alright, so we have one, one amendment on five in the middle of the page. Where Ashley was speaking. There's three bullets there. The second bullet talks about the Rutgers numbers and it was Rutgers. Numbers, Rutgers University, R U T G E R S. I also thought that perhaps on the first page at the bottom, the first page, the very first sentence, it says the board reviewed the minutes. And then the very next sentence says they were, they were, it goes into the motion approved them as amended. I would just add a sentence after the first sentence says Ms. Goldstein suggested several amendments. And then that we improved it. So it's three, one typo, two insertions. Anybody have anything else? No? Okay, we have a, a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Ellen? And I go, yes, thank you. Okay. We're waiting there. Way of getting a hold of him to see if he's coming. He's critical of both the applications tonight.
I'll send him an email.
Thank you. Alright, I guess we can get started without him. First item on the agenda, first application on the agenda is a continuing site plan review for 1258 East Boston Post Road, which is the Toyota properties. And they're proposing to construct a new motor vehicle sales facility with related parking vehicles stored on what is now a vacant lot. We're nearing the end of our review. I think that we've been to ZBIA and back. There's John, there's John, just getting ready to start without you.
Good evening.
Okay, so we're just starting Toyota. We need to, if someone's here to speak for the applicant as to the changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. Which was April 27th. Walk through the changes and then comment and move forward. Ashley, can you see the people who need to be promoted?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Okay, you want to walk us through where we are, what's been changed since the last time we saw you? I think you addressed, from what I see from our consultant, you've addressed the issues that were brought up.
Certainly, I can share my screen. Is that plan showing for everyone?
Yes.
So in response to the comments from the last meeting, we did rework the vehicle storage spaces and parking layout on the site to provide co-compliant parking spaces at nine by nineteen on the parking stalls as well as one ADA space. We also did provide the turning maneuver diagrams, which I believe John's office reviewed. That culminated in a slight change from the plan we formally submitted to your board. This is the current plan. I did see that it got posted to the agenda. But so now we verify those. I'm sorry?
Whitney is on vacation, so.
Oh. They, they did get onto the agenda. I don't know if they got certain.
The agenda, the planning board members, I believe, got it, but it didn't get posted. I apologize to any members of the public who were looking for it. But this is what happens when a key person is not in the office. And unfortunately, people didn't know to send it to the person who was subbing for her. And so. And I, you know, none of us are in the office, so. Okay. You want to walk people through with them since some people haven't seen it?
Essentially, the site plan largely remains the same. There was one concern about accessing this parking stall here, which resulted in just taking some of the storage spaces away to ride a better turning radius as a car comes into the site. So other than that, there was a note added for the street tree and some tree protection measures that were added to the plans as well. I did see in Susan's memo that there was a request just that the plans be coordinated to reference the same notes throughout. So we certainly have no issue making that minor change. And I think outside of that, the, the, the plan is largely the same as it was last before you.
I think you added, added a handicapped accessible parking space.
Yes, that, that is correct up here.
Okay, I think that was it. Does anybody else, is there anything else that you want to tell us before we turn it over to our consultants?
No, I, I, I believe we've addressed all the consultant comments, but certainly if there's anything further, we have our team here.
Okay.
Would you like me to stop sharing?
Everybody's good? Everybody can see it? Okay, yes, you can stop sharing. And we wouldn't see faces. Okay, Ashley, is there anything that you would like to add? I think you recommending that we consider final site plan approval tonight.
That's correct. They have addressed all of AKRF's comments.
Okay, John, anything?
They've also addressed all of our comments.
Okay. Susan, I think that. And I, I got to check the draft resolution to see if it addresses your concern, to make sure that it's a condition of the resolution. I don't know. Charlie, you're also filling in tonight.
If it's helpful, I, Teresa sent me the draft resolution. I can share my screen if you'd like.
I have a question on, on John Keller's memo there. I think there's still an open item. Unless, so, so item 19, talking about the curb cut on Sunnyside.
Yes, I think it was discussed at the last meeting.
It was discussed at the last meeting.
And I believe it's addressed in the resolution.
Okay, it's just that your memo shows that that's still an open item for the planning board to, to do a final decision on, so.
Yes, it wa, it was open on my end because there was nothing stated on the drawings of what was to take place at that location. However, I believe it's addressed in the resolution.
Okay.
So we should probably look at how it's addressed in the resolution.
Okay.
The applicant at the last meeting stated they are not the owners of the property. And in, with respect to the, with respect to the landlord, they didn't want to block that off permanently. It's just going to be blocked off by cars and by, I, I believe a chain and. Right, right, because you know, if it was their property, they could do it, but it's not.
That is correct.
Thank you. I'm surprised I remember this. Today's been a bad day. Okay, you want to bring the resolution up on the screen and we'll check for their language for making sure that the the construction plans have the tree protection information on it. Susan, was that the issue? Yes, the plan revised, okay.
Everybody see the resolution?
It was, it was actually both in the same exact page you were on.
Oh.
The other, right, the conditions, right? Right. The applicant shall block off the curb cut entrance using it only for emergency ingress and egress. And the plan shall be revised to show pre-protection on the grading and utilities plan C102 with the related icon included in legend as on C103. Okay. Does anybody on the planning board have any other issues or questions with regards to this?
Yeah, with, with apologies for, I wasn't at the last meeting that this came to, but I did watch the replay. I do, I do have a couple if that's okay. So the first question might be for AKRF. Could you help me understand why, I mean, I think this is 2,200 new impervious square feet in a wetlands buffer? How, how, how did they avoid HDZM?
It's not in it.
So it's, it's actually outside of the buffer. So they did have a wetland consultant go out and, and identify where the buffer was. And it's, it's not a wetland. It's the stream corridor, but only had the, the 50-foot buffer.
Okay, so is the, and again, apologies that I wasn't at the last meeting, but is the T100 plan, has that been updated? That, that's where I saw the proposed impervious, impervious surface within a wetlands buffer.
Um. See, I think there.
Actually. The, the current plan shows the, the 50-foot water course buffer, C101, the layout landscape plan is all the other plans too. It shows a 50-foot water course buffer and all of the activity is located beyond that.
And then I, I guess my specific question is, although that's helpful, is this plan that I'm looking at, which might be outdated, but that's what I'm trying to understand, says that there's 2,231 square feet of proposed in survey, impervious surface within the wetlands buffer? Has that been updated if that's an error?
Is the date on the plan you're looking at? We actually talked about the wetlands back in September of last year before the, the applicant went to the zoning board.
Okay, that was before my time here too, so. Okay, it's, it sounds like it is not true that there's 2,200 square feet in, of impervious within a wetlands buffer. Okay, and then, um, the maybe a question for John Keller, just education wise. So a SWIP's prepared for this. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but I think it's, you know, covering 100-year stormwater to pre-development levels, I, I think. Does, do, do you have? It's a two-part question, but they're related, I guess. Do you have an opinion that your memo says that the runoff quality has been addressed by a hydrodynamic separator? But is your opinion that that's adequate and a, and a, and a good solution for that? And then the, the second part of my question is, does the SWIP even attempt to address, is it designed to address like all the runoff from cars of a parking lot right beside, you know, Beaver Swamp Brook, important kind of water course in the village? So if, if you don't mind, just a quick comment on kind of water quality and, and that.
Yeah, the, the storm scepter is, will also separate the oils. Am I correct, Ellen? Yes, it is exactly. It removes coarse sediment and removes floatables like oils and grease. That's one of its principal aim. And really what it does, it provides pretreatment of the runoff. And a lot of the water quality improvement occurs within the chambers, which, you know, through infiltration, which is a standard practice for improving water quality. But the, but the separator will be your pretreatment that will remove of debris, sediments and typically the oils and grease collect on the sediments.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the SWIP covers water, water up to a level from like a flooding perspective. And, and, and I think that that addresses 100-year storm at pre-development condition, I think. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then water quality is worse, but mitigated with this, is that right? Or is it also designed to be neutral to pre-development?
What it does is it captures the water quality volume, provides treatment for it, which is the requirement.
Okay. And that's.
It's probably a better practice for this type of use to have it, to have the separator as a, as a pretreatment device. Because of the vehicles being.
Yeah. Okay.
By removing sediment too, it, it prolongs the life of the, you know, the, the quality of the runoff that's treated. So that's what it does.
Okay, and then, and then last question is a little bit of a blanket question, but just if you'll indulge me to catch up to speed a little bit, it sounds like two other times, at least this applicant was here. I wasn't on the board. Being right beside Beaver Swamp Brook, from a flooding perspective, is the opinion that this project is designed for no, you know, kind of negative implications to the, the flow that's going to go into Beaver Swamp Brook and, and potential flooding concerns?
Yes, they satisfied the requirements of any increase in, in rate of runoff in the site.
Okay.
I, I also know what Seamus is getting at because I, if I recall, like the first time we looked at this application some time ago, we were concerned that the applicant owned or controlled the property directly adjacent to the water course. And I'm pretty sure, and Mr. Napier, maybe you can elaborate, that there's a strip of, of land that the applicant does not control and, and is still a grassy strip separating the waterway from the sales facility. So I, I think we all had concerns that it was adjacent to and in the buffer, but that's been cleared up since. Is that right?
There, there is another parcel between the, the subject property and the, the water course. I don't have the exact measurement, but it's probably approximately 75 feet from the edge of the, the subject property. And that parcel actually wraps around both sides of the water course. It's one tax lot that, that is bifurcated by the, the water course. It is not part of this subject application. I believe it may be in common ownership with the landlord, but it's not part of what the, the Baltimore views is intended for at the subject property. That there's no, there's no plans to develop that downhill from there on that adjacent lot.
Okay. I think we asked when you came in September because BIDA had just happened, whether any water was actually on that property. Because the Beaver Swamp Brook did flood and did cause some damage to the roadway and the driveway of the house on the other side of it and the driveway, roadway across the street. But I don't, I think the answer was no, there was no, if I remember correctly. That, now that's really long ago, so let's see how much I remember from that.
And, and then over the, over the course of this applicant's lifecycle, the new wetlands law, does that change how you think about the proximity to the water course? I, I hear that it's not in the wetland buffer. That seems to be pretty clearly stated. But this is. We're, we're considering all, all of the proximities that are required, right, by the code and law?
Yeah. Yes, they, they have on their plans mapped the limit of the 100-year foot plane and they are out of that. And they are out outside of the 50-foot water course buffer.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, this brings us to the end. Comfortable, you have a draft resolution from Teresa and Charlie's here to answer any questions anybody may have about it. I know I read it on Monday, I think. Didn't have any questions then. I don't think I have any questions now. Is the board comfortable with moving forward and approving this project? Anybody? Any comments, anything? Do I have a motion then to approve the application of the Automotive Group LLC doing business as Toyota State for a new motor sales facility at 1258 East Boston Post Road?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ellen, you're muted.
Um, yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
It goes us to our second application of the evening, which is 1010 Oriental. And here too, I apologize. Resolution did not get posted on the website due to Brittany's absence. But it's a draft resolution and we haven't committed to we're committed to doing anything with it tonight. But if you hear reference to a resolution, that's why it's not there. Okay. I guess Mr. Napier stays with us. Is there anyone else from your team who you'd like to be promoted?
There should be Diane Eaton and Christina Zalesi and the Langen group. I don't know if they're in the, the crowd there.
Can walk us through any changes that have happened since the last time we were here?
Is Meredith on your team?
Yes.
Yes, Meredith does.
And so while Meredith's being moved into the meeting, I, I could just briefly start. So the, the plan, the only change to the plans, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Christina, was a change in response to the additional default testing that was done on the property since the last meeting. And so Christina, if you could walk the board through the changes.
Uh, sure. Do you want me to bring up the plan?
Sure. If you, yes.
Okay, let me pull that up right now.
I believe you made some changes due to the test pits and rock and groundwater and lovely things like that.
Yes, yep. So based on the comments at the last public hearing, we needed to go back out and redo testing because the test holes did not extend three, a minimum of three feet below to verify the depth of groundwater and rock. We went out and did an additional test pit in the back and we had encountered rock just under, just a, a little below the three feet. So we ended up raising the system just slightly to make sure that we had the separation of three feet to groundwater in the system in the back. I believe it just raised maybe a quarter of an inch, so we have the three feet of separation. When we went out and did the testing in the front, we encountered rock pretty shallow. So we ended up having to raise the entire system in the front to get the three feet of separation to the rock. And in order to make sure there was adequate cover over the system, we ended up shifting it's to the north towards the building to keep it away from the existing standing wall, since we did not want to impact any of the existing grading that was there. So we, so we didn't, so we generally have three feet, we have three feet of separation to groundwater and rock out there. We did not need to redo the infiltration testing since the depth at which both tests were previously performed were now, are now at the bottom of the systems. So that was the only change into our design.
Okay. John, do you want to comment on, on their changes for the board?
Those are the three, those are the, my last comments were related to the separation. And the applicant had the system originally up higher. It was at my recommendation that they lowered the system. And it was my opinion that they may be better off in the long term if the system was, was infiltrating at an elevation below the basement elevation. But obviously due to the the bedrock conditions, they had to raise it back up, which is fine. It meets the regulations. It was only a suggestion on my part that resulted in their lowering it in the first place. So I am satisfied with the stormwater project.
Okay, and Ashley, does, do you have anything to comment on?
No, we have no further comments on this.
I have a comment.
Okay. We're next.
Go right ahead.
Um, it, it seems like some another leg of drainage pipe adjacent to the stone wall that the angle of the drainage pipe has changed and there's a new leg, like right where that your, your cursor is.
Yeah, yep. So originally this.
That, and, and that, that will interfere with the planting, the plantings.
So, I mean, it shouldn't interfere with the plantings. We can slide the structure over slightly, but it was needed in order to be able to discharge into the system. We can shift the structure to the right if needed, so that way it doesn't impact the tree.
Um, how deep are those, those pipes going to be?
I mean, they're, they're roughly two and a half feet, so there's generally about two feet of cover over the pipe.
Um, I, if you go back to the landscape plan, you have shrubs that will be considerably sized, planted right on top of that. I'm not sure if that's the best solution.
Well, we have to collect the, the, we'll have to look at that because we have to collect the road that's coming down and it has to get into the system. So we'll take a look at the planting internally and see if we can make some amendments. Yeah, I think there's space to negotiate there.
Okay, thank you. So we have that open issue. I also, so you move the entire system in the front more towards the, more towards the prop, the house.
Yes.
So it leaves more space in front of, of the in front of that. If you, we wanted to, is it possible then to spread out some of the trees? So they're not so pushed together and maybe go in that space a little bit?
Um, sorry, we can, I forgot to unmute, but this is Meredith at Langen. We're, um, we can, we can look at that, yeah. I think per, you know, client requests, we were.
I think per, you know, client requests, we were keeping the trees located. You know, they, they want that kind of entrance. So we can, we can take a look at it, but yeah.
Right. I don't know. I mean, that's just one person's opinion. And I was just a question. I'm not saying you should do it, but some of the comments that we received from the public last time were focused on the front there because it had been, I guess, had been wooded before the trees were removed. Okay, does anybody else from the planning board have any questions before we reopen the public hearing?
So I have a question for John Coward. Is the system they've proposed, you said it meets all the standards. Is there anything they could do? I know there are a lot of neighbors that are concerned about runoff onto their property. Is there anything else you would have recommended that they do to, to take care of the stormwater issue?
The typical requirements are to detain the runoff and allow discharge from the site. And the discharge from the property would be equivalent to what the discharge is today. Presently, without development, pre-development discharge.
But without the trees. I mean, I'm assuming the trees that used to be there offered some kind of mitigation of stormwater runoff.
Yes, the value of the amount of runoff is higher without the trees, no doubt about it. But what the applicant has done is, is went a step further and designed a stormwater infiltration system that had, has no discharge right through the hundred year storm from all impervious surfaces. So they're actually reducing the discharge. The only discharge you'll see from the property up to the hundred year storm is what falls in the lawn area, which is not captured and brought into the infiltrators.
The lawn, the lawn area in the, what part of the property? There's not a lot of lawn that I can see.
Yeah, any lawn area that isn't collected by a drainage system, which is the area in the side there. Most of the rear yard is collected, but anything beyond the drainage system will run off. But the applicant has looked at what that runoff would be and it's a fraction of what the runoff is today. So their design significantly reduces the runoff from the property right through the hundred year storm.
Okay, thank you. Then the only other question I have, is there some way through the miracle of CAD design or something to show street views of the property with the plantings outlined that, you know, right now when they're installed versus what they might, might look like in five years or 10 years? Is there a way to predict what the street view or the neighbors on the sides would see either when the property is, is, you know, fixed up according to this plan and then what it would look like in, say, five years or some, you know, estimating the growth rates of the different species of plantings?
Is that a question for me?
I'm not sure. Probably not, John. You're off the hook on that one. I think it's for the landscape architects.
Yeah.
Yeah. There are ways to do that. It's not the miracle of CAD, unfortunately. It's a lot of you know, us kind of drawing it out and or modeling it out. So it's a bit of work that goes into what you're asking there to draw out or show those perspectives in some way or model the site. It involves, you know, taking a building model, grading model, and combining it all together with the existing grading and I won't bore everyone with the details of how it works. It's possible. It's not as easy as we would all like it to be, though.
Understood. All right. Thank you.
The architect could do a rendering of that if they wanted. You could do rendering.
Well, what, what we're kind of talking about with the planting and stuff would fall under our purview as the landscape architects. So yes, that's what I'm saying is yes, it is possible. It's, it's possible. It's just a little bit of work. More than a little bit of work, but it's possible.
Okay, anyone else on the planning board have any comments or question?
Yeah, I had one question for John Coward as well. On the move, movement of the sump pump discharge. Trying to find the language. Yeah, so what you note is that it provides currently more area for discharge to this big. Does it provide enough more area? You know, what, what's the standard that you think about that, right? It moved, could it have moved even further? Has it moved enough? How do you put a little bit more into that?
Well, they redesigned it so that the discharge is on their property and not at the property line directly flowing onto the adjacent properties. Eventually, it would go onto adjacent properties, but it would first somewhat pond and then spill over off the property. Perhaps the Langen engineer can, can talk about the elevation of these basement slab versus the the model, modeling groundwater levels that they uncovered.
So the basement slab is at elevation 16. Let's see, where's the? So we encountered rock roughly at six feet down, up in the front. So we're look and then that rock is shallow up here in the front and then in the back, though. We encountered groundwater, you know, roughly seven feet below grade. We didn't encounter groundwater up in the front. So it's all, it was mainly back here. So groundwater is down lower. And that's because there's, you know, shallow rock up here in the front essentially. So even though we're down at 16, we don't anticipate a lot of groundwater to be picked up and discharged through the sump pumps for the footing drains.
Got an answering question?
Yeah, I mean, it was good extra information around it. Is, I mean, is the sump pump discharge, could it move any further away from neighbors' property? Is it now as far away as possible or?
I mean, the sump pump discharge location is here, back by the roof cabana to allow it to, to sheet across the property. So I mean, and there is a great inlet here that it will potentially go into our grate and into our system, a portion of it. But yeah, I mean, we're locating it as far away as, I mean, initially it was up in this corner, so it was pretty close to the neighbors. I mean, I can do a dimension real quick and indicate how far away it is.
Yeah, and I'm more looking for methodology. Did you just move it as far away as possible?
Yeah, we moved it far away as possible so that it wouldn't directly discharge onto the neighbors, any neighboring properties and to allow it to the sheet flow across the property instead of it being a concentrated property and concentrated flow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Does that take care of everybody? Get on to reopening the public hearing? Charlie, I just, do I just need to call for a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Yep, you can do a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Okay, okay. I need then a real motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, in favor, Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Everybody keeps moving around on the screen.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I go, yes. Okay, before the public, we did receive one email this afternoon with regards to comments for the public hearing, which was sent to all of the planning board members, but not to the staff person filling in for Brittany. So that did not get posted on the website because the person didn't know it was there. And it didn't get sent to our consultants until I saw it, which was close to six o'clock this evening. Haven't had a chance to review it in detail, our consultants. I know, John, I sent it to you pretty late. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
No, I saw the memo, but I didn't have a chance to look.
If we can address some of the issues tonight, we will, but we are certainly considering, and it was received, considered. We also received an email right after the last public hearing from a neighbor. And then a third email following up on that from another neighbor basically supporting the comments in that, in that email. And I just want to remind people, the planning board is not the entity that will pursue the, the of the trees other than to do what we can during review to replace them. We can't levy any penalty or levy any fine or levy any punishment whatsoever. And so I know people were upset by it, but we're not the right people to address those comments to. Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Please raise your hand. Ashley will promote you. If you state your name, if it's not clearly on the screen, but I need, we need it for the minutes anyway.
If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, use the raise your hand feature. I see no hands.
No hands. All right. Okay, we did our job, I guess.
There's one, there's one.
Okay.
Here, you took your hand out. Do you want to speak? I'm going to allow you to talk in case you do.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, this is Terry Grant from 1016 Oriente Avenue. And I just have a couple of questions. These are peripheral. I know we have seen seepage through the stone wall and just are concerned that the stone wall be preserved in all of this and that the drainage efforts are geared towards keeping the, keeping the wall intact. I know after a couple of storms, there were lagoons on the inside side of the wall. And my sister saw that the bottom course of the stone wall was, was wet. Another question is, I see that the sidewalk will be replaced. I just have a question about responsibility. Who is responsible for the work between the street and the sidewalk mowing that? And there's also a tree that needs care. A horse chestnut that needs some direction at the front of that property. So those are just sort of little questions I have about this.
See if I remember from a previous life I once had, the sidewalk and the grass are usually made, the sidewalk not maintenance, but the grass is maintained by the homeowner, but the trees are the village responsibility. They don't want homeowners maintaining the trees because people tend to cut them and do things to them.
Yeah, okay, so I can contact the village about that.
The grass is usually cut by the homeowner between the sidewalk and the street. Know the property owner, whoever's maintaining the rest of the property. Did I get that right? Frank, you probably don't know this.
The trees are normally in the right of way, so they're
Yeah, they're in the right of way. They're not, they're not the homeowner's trees. They belong to the village.
That's correct.
Okay. As we learned once when we had an applicant who cut them down, not that long ago. Anybody else? Ashley, you don't see any other hands, Rose?
I don't see any other hands. Like I said, if you have a question or a comment, please use the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're on the phone.
No. We're closing the public hearing tonight, so if no other, if there are no other comments.
Well, well, I think the last, the person who mentioned it wanted, I think, some assurances about the stone wall. And I think the applicant is preserving that, but I don't want to be the one on record saying that.
So the stone wall is remaining in place. We're not showing it to be removed. There is a low spot behind the wall that we're adding that catch basin, and that's what's collecting the runoff in that area to keep it from ponding and it will direct it to our infiltration system.
So, so what you're doing should cut down on the seepage coming through the wall onto the sidewalk and right of way?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, there are no other comments or questions with regards to this. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I need a second. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I think there's a couple of minor issues that we should carry over then and not deal with the resolution tonight. It's everyone agreement. Yeah, I think it's the best course of action to the applicant. I understand you know, the homeowners wish to have a view of the house from the street. You can balance that a little bit, but what we want to make sure is that the trees that you plant survive. You know, at the last meeting, we discussed the size of the trees and now larger trees don't do well, being transplanted and whatnot. So we, you know, I think the board accepted that, although we did get some comments on that. But we want to just make sure we have the optimal situation for the trees that are, that are going to be planted.
Understood. We can also look at the potential conflict between the root balls and the drain lines.
Okay, great. Okay. See you again soon. Since this is something minor, I'm going to, Brittany's not here, but I'm going to, if you want to get in quickly, we can probably get you on the next agenda, next meeting agenda.
That would be much appreciated.
Okay, since it's not, it's not anything major that you'd have to work on. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn. People don't need to be here, can start dropping off.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right.
So moved.
I have to.
I'm sorry, did you second that, Richard?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we're going to voice vote for the German. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? No? Okay, good evening, everyone. Have a nice evening. It was very nice. Have a happy Memorial Day and stay safe.